Okay, we're here with Mr. Carl White. He is running for Conroe City Council, place five.
Sure.
It's April 4th, 2018. I'm John Mertz and with me are Pat Tibbs, Dennis Tibbs, and Bob Bagley. And expecting Dale Fessenden to join us shortly. As we discussed, we'll silence all phones. And also, we'll go ahead and if you'd like, open up with up to five-minute opening.
Okay.
And then what we'll do is just go around the table with questions pertaining to the questionnaire, you know, that you answered to the, and to anything other events, you know, current events that are going on and whatnot.
Okay.
With that, and Pat's gonna be our timer. And as we, so up to five minutes and then when we start going around the table, we'll ask a question, give you up to approximately two minutes.
Okay.
You know, and answer so that we can kinda keep things moving along.
Okay.
Okay, alright, I'll turn over to you. Thanks for joining us.
So, good, thank you all for having me here. My name is Carl White and I am a lifelong resident of Conroe, Texas. It has always been a goal of mine to serve the people of Conroe as your Conroe City Council. You know, I believe that Conroe is the city of opportunity, the city where dreams come true. And as elected official, I believe that we must leverage the power of people. You know, Conroe is about all of us tapping into our God-given potential, setting the stage that one day will benefit our children and our grandchildren in the future. And as councilmen, we must be constantly striving to work with the citizens to improve the economic outlook of Conroe, Texas. You know, Conroe is not about you, Conroe is not about us, I mean, Conroe is about us. And as your councilman, I will go into the various neighborhoods and hear your story. Because I believe that it's the job of the city councilman not to tell you what you need, but to listen to your story and work with you and see how can we provide what you need. When I've been elected, I will begin the process of what I call Neighborhood of Waters Program, where I will come to various community centers and hear your story. Because like I say, it's all about that we leverage the power of people. Also, when elected, I want to start what we call think tanks, where we get people from all walks of life, young, old, black and white, sitting around the table, coming up with ideas that will benefit the city of Conroe. I'm retired, you know, I worked for thirty-five years at Integy, retired about three years ago. I was in law, US Army, first of all, I was in law enforcement for eighteen years. I've served on many commissions and boards. Currently, I serve on the Montgomery County Homeless Coalition. I'm also president of Montgomery County N W A C P. And I say and I like to say this, I believe in serving the people. When I'm running for city council, I do not have any acts of crime, nobody asks me to run, so I'm only gonna serve the people of Conroe. It's all about the people. My platform is year twenty-sixty. I won't be here, a lot of you all won't be here, but our children, our grandchildren, they will be here. And so, working together, we can all set the stage that's gonna benefit our children and our grandchildren. Conroe, well, last year, actually, I received, you know, accolades of the fastest-growing city in the United States of America. We must capitalize after that. And I said "we" because it's all about the people. It's about, not about the elected officials, I will work with every elected official, but my goal is getting in touch with the people. People built this country and people are going to continue to build this country. I believe that everybody's input is important. No matter who you are, no matter what people think about you, we all bring something to the table. That's why diversity is so important. Not just saying the word diversity, but actually embracing diversity. Because we are all, we all got various life experiences and we can all bring something to the table. And I believe that when people working together, kinda go back to the days of the Bible, you know, the Bible said, "God said, 'We don't come down, they conform them.'" They're gonna build that tower to Babylon. So, I know people working together, we can achieve a lot. And I wanna be that councilperson that when it's all said and done, that Carl was a councilman for the people. He only thought about what was best for the people. Not so much the city of Conroe, but what was best for the people in the city of Conroe. And that is, that's my platform. I tell you, I'm retired and when elected, I'm gonna, the city of Conroe pay you a certain amount, car allowance. I'm gonna use that car allowance, go into various cities, looking at various best practices and see if those things will work here in Conroe. I'm gonna, I'm gonna go talk to people. I'm gonna be, as you say, a full-time councilman. I told my wife that I would never go back to work again, but I actually told her lie. Because I don't mind going back, working for the people of Conroe. So, I would appreciate that on May the 5th, 2018, that you cast your vote for Carl White, position number five. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, so we appreciate your service, military service, and to the constable's office. And you mentioned that you were Army?
Yes.
Four years?
Four years.
Is that right, okay. And when did you serve and what was your MOS?
I served from nineteen-seventy-five to nineteen-seventy-nine. My MOS was thirteen Bravo, but when I went in, the supply clerk, for whatever reason, asked me to want to be in supply. So, actually, I was in supply the whole time I was there.
Oh, really? Okay, cool. Okay, did you like your service in the military? And would you recommend kids go into the service as one of their paths, career paths?
Well, I went into the service, I'm gonna tell you why I went in, because I didn't like school. So, that's why I went in. But when I got in there, it was awesome. Because I met guys from east coast, west coast, north and south. So, for four years, I met all type of people. It was very enjoyable. But one thing about the military, you, young man, you can save money by going into military. Because the military is gonna provide you a place to eat and a place to sleep. You don't have to spend your money. You can save your money, they're gonna also provide you opportunities to go to school while you're in there and while you're out of there. So, I would recommend, every young man, if you do not wanna go to college, go serve your country. Because it's gonna be an experience, you're gonna be, you're gonna enjoy, you're gonna travel, you're gonna enjoy, and you're gonna learn. Because a lot of you now, a lot of us now might be stuck in Conroe, but you're gonna hear what's going on around the United States of America. You're gonna experience all kind of culture. So, it would be very rewarding for anyone to go into the military service.
Is the city councilman's job a full-time job?
The city councilman's job is not a full-time job, but I plan on making it my full-time job. At the present time, city council, I mean, they pay you from what I, the last thing in the paper, they pay you two hundred dollars per meeting. They give you around five hundred eighty-seven dollars for a car allowance and cell phone. So, that's a lot of money. And I don't just plan on going to some type of five-minute meeting to get two hundred dollars.
Yeah.
You know, I plan on being an effective councilman. It's been a goal, I said it's a goal of mine. So many times, we have people sit in positions and they just sit there and hold up seat. My daddy told me a long time, he told me two things. First, he said, "Boy, be your old man." Didn't know what he was talking about until I got older. But what he meant is that if you make a mistake, make sure it's your mistake, not because somebody influenced you with their various ideas. And he also said, "If you're gonna be a part of something, do your very best." So, yes, city council will be a full-time job for me. Because it's gonna take a lot of learning. You know, I'm gonna, I plan on going to all the various Texas municipal league classes. You know, I plan on doing all of that. Because I wanna learn how to be an effective city councilman. Just not a city councilman, an effective city councilman.
And how often do they meet?
City council meets, they have a work, really, four times a month. They have a workshop and then the next day they have a meeting. So, basically, you know, four times, yeah, four times a month. And you know, some people, that's all they meet is four times a month. You know, I mean, that's it.
But, so it turns out to be about a fourteen-hundred-dollar-a-month job?
Something like that, yeah.
Okay. And you know, most people, when you're asked a question, you're running for office, if you think you oughta have a paid-for car, they're, they know that the people asking that question is wanting to say, "No, no, I don't need a car." But, you know, your use of it makes it sound like it might be justified. But across the board, giving folks a car, what do you think would be good requirement for them to meet, to keep that car? Driving to the, to the meetings four times a month is not enough. What should they be doing? How should they document how they actually give the taxpayers their money's worth out of that car?
Okay, I don't, I don't think they get a car, just get mileage allowance on your car. It's what they need, they get mileage allowance, everything. Now, how you gonna document? I just, you document it by what you're doing, by the places that you go. Because, you know, when you're going somewhere for city business, the city secretary gonna know you're going somewhere because of city business.
Yeah.
So, you can document how often that person is using that car for city businesses, how often that person is using their cell phone, because it's all documented, you know. I believe, like I said, if you wanna be an effective and you represent the city, the county, I believe you should get some type of pay for it. You know, I just believe, I mean, there just is, nothing in this world is free today.
And there's an expense report, you think you turn in?
I'm pretty sure there's an expense report, yeah.
Her speaker wasn't on.
Yeah.
He's just keep going and ask questions.
There's a number of communities within the state that have done away with property taxes. The city of Stafford is one of the closest ones that totally did with, did away with property tax to fund the city. And they're growing leaps and bounds. They're not annexing to grow like Conroe's doing, kinda like Houston did. But they've got commercial industry and private citizens, you know, just buying houses there because there is no property tax. Do you think that that's possible to be done in Conroe? And would you be willing to try to initiate that?
You, you mentioned two things, you mentioned annexation also.
Yes, I did.
My, my, annexation, when you think about annexation, annexation is good if everybody's willing to be an XA. But also, what the city of Conroe doing is what we call forced annexation. And it's only used for really three purposes. One purpose is just to increase the tax base. Another purpose is control development. But there's also, I read off in the Brooklyn Institute, that it can also be used to up your bond rating. So, maybe they doing it for that reason, everything. Now, how Stafford is doing with property taxes and they still moving up the hill, that has to be investigated. And that's why I wanna be on council. I will go talk to Stafford. Because if it's working in Stafford, it'll work in Conroe. If it, we, we, fifty to sixty miles down the road, there's a reason, you know. And Conroe being the fastest-growing city in the United States of America and everybody wants to come to Conroe, if it's working in Stafford, it'll work in Conroe. You have to investigate those, everything. It's all, again, it's all about the city, what's doing, what's best for the people of the city. And right, I don't like property tax. You know, I do not like property, I got a house and a building, I do not like property taxes, you know. But so, we know, I didn't know that was going on, but that's good to know that, that, you know, a city here in Texas has done with the property tax.
There's a number, a number of them.
Number cities, okay.
Yes, sir.
That's first of all, that's the first I heard.
Stafford's one of the closest and one of the biggest that does that. And they just use their sales tax.
Okay.
And they operate their police department, their fire department, their municipal departments, everything, just off of, of sales tax.
Okay, well, see, that, that, that is gonna be a place that I can go to. Because I plan on going to places like Stafford and talk, I plan on going to Austin, talking to people that's in the field. Wouldn't it be good for Conroe? How can we benefit?
All right. What's your position on the S J R A and Lone Star Groundwater Boards? And explain, you said, "The price of water is rising and as a city, we need help with state officials to solve the issue." My question on that is, what are your thoughts on the S J R A and G Groundwater Board, Lone Star Board? And do you think there is a water crisis as many in government like those two boards would suggest?
Okay, for the water crisis, fifteen years ago, we went to San Marcos and we rode right in the glass bottom of the boat. The young man who was, you know, giving the tour, he was saying, "Look down there, what you don't see." We didn't, he said, "We don't see the bubbles anymore." Because he said those aquifers are drying up. So, fifteen years ago, coming from a person who works up there, apparently there's a water crisis. You go back and talk about California. You know, California has been experiencing a war. The same issue that happened in, with the San Jose River Authority here, it happened, happened in Conroe and California years ago. So, yes, there is, I believe that is a water crisis. But, you know, and I believe that, you know, at this particular time, that we paying for too much for water. But I also believe that we wanna enjoy the quality of life that we have for water. I don't know, the San Jose River Authority and the Lone Star, the contract there's, people said that the city was forced to sign a contract. I don't know, I wasn't there. And being just a regular old John Doe citizen, you know, I didn't investigate it. But I do look on my bills and say, "Look at all these fees for your water," which I don't like that. And a whole lot of people don't like that. Lot of things that, as elected official, you have to dive off into them. But being a regular citizen, me, because of me, being a citizen, I didn't dive off into them. That's why, that's why it's important that you, when you have sitting at the table, you can ask the hard questions. You know, right now, I didn't know who to ask the hard questions to. But by sitting at the table, you can ask the hard, now I can go talk to San Jose River Authority, Lone Star Groundwater, you know, I go talk to people in the state of Texas. You can do all those things when you're positioned to do all those things. Little bit of me right now, Carl White, I'm in a position to do that. But I do know, yeah, my water bill is high. Yeah, and so is everybody else's also, you know.
Do you know if Conroe is involved in the lawsuit against S J R A and Lone Star?
I do know Conroe was involved a while back and I think they just getting involved again. And I do know, a year ago, Conroe sent a councilman to Austin to look into that. Now, what was the outcome of that? I hadn't heard anything about that. But they did send a councilman up there. But that's why I say, you know, it's important that we get people like congressmen, you know, a senator and a rep, get them involved, everything. Because it's just about Congress, about the other areas too. You know, so we know, Congress shouldn't have to fight this battle by itself. We should get the players involved. So, I think, you know, those people have a whole lot more power than the city councilman. You know, our congressman and our senator and our state rep, get those people involved in this issue and everything. That's, that was my thing, that's my take, get those people involved. Because they, like I say, they can, they can do things that we might not can do, you know.
How long is the term for the city council?
Uh, city council has, well, basically, four-year term. And you can serve twice.
Oh, so that's your term limit, two times, huh?
Yes. And I'm not, you know, you know, so many people get into city government and they major thinking about reelection. I could care less about reelection. You know, I just wanna win, if, these four years, I be achieve my goal and I'll be beginning to work on a foundation. You know, I'll be the built that foundation out. The people after me let it crumble, that's them. But I will be the starter that foundation. So, I could care less, I can tell you that right now today, I care less about re-electing. I just wanna achieve my goal, is to be a councilman, you know, to serve the people.
You reference having a state representative go up Austin and speak on your behalf, who would that be?
Well, in this area, Representative Milton Metcalf, he's in this area. We got Senator Craden and we got Congressman Breckin.
Yeah.
You know, he's in Washington, other two in Texas. Let those guys, you know, help us out.
Okay.
You talked about the municipal leagues and work with the city, the cities and doing the stuff in Austin and getting the training. Do you know about Agenda Twenty-One, you're in Agenda Twenty-One?
I've heard about Agenda Twenty-One and I heard about it actually on the documentary on Netflix. You know, they was talking about it. And when I was walking the neighborhood, I knocked on the guy's door and he mentioned Agenda Twenty-One also. But I heard something about it, about, and I was actually watching this documentary on water. That's why I heard about it, they mentioned Agenda Twenty-One. They talked about what's going on in California, how, how these agencies, they got a grip on the water. They control the water. And we know that if you control the water, you control the people. We know that, yeah.
And we know that with, with San Jose River Authority and Lone Star, but...
And California.
Yeah, but there's, there's a lot more, a lot more to it.
Yeah, okay.
And part of the things to be careful about is taking too much of the information that you get from the municipal leagues and things like that. Because they're usually pushing the Agenda Twenty-One platform. And I would just suggest to you...
I mention, I mention municipal leagues because they have a lot of training.
They do.
And I wanna get all the training I can get. You know, but I also do a lot of reading, you know. And, you know, I'm just not gonna rely on one particular source. And that's why, you know, the Bible talks about ignorant people. You know, ignorant people who won't rely on one source of information. I'm gonna read, I'm gonna talk to people, because I wanna get a clear, again, if I make a mistake, it's not because you told what I heard from you, it's because I, I made, in my mind, the best decision. It might be wrong, but I done put all the pieces together. But, and that's, that's how, that's how I operate my life right now today. I do, I like to, I do a lot of reading, I like to read. I like to watch documentaries and things.
You had mentioned that one of your current Conroe board members that you identify most with as Duke Coon. What are some, what are some of the things that you agree with him on that you like that he's done?
But Duke has always...
Because they helped the people.
Okay, well, yeah, first of all, Duke has always been nice to me. You know, every year, I'd like to mention on the president of Montgomery County N W A C P, we always give scholarships out. Duke has always contributed to our scholarship fund also. But also, when you walk around the community campaigning and you talking to people, Duke Coon is the only name that comes up. That he had, people had issues with the, you know, with the ditch behind their house, Duke helped him. He's the only name I've ever heard that has ever came up, that has helped the people of Conroe. So, that's one, and like I said, he's just, you know, he's just a nice guy. That's why I said Duke Coon.
Okay.
You know, most things are not always good or always bad. And technology is one of those things. You mentioned here, technology growth. For instance, some school district, I think Katie was one of them, decided that every kindergarten needed an iPad. They spent millions of dollars. And then they decided that those kids really weren't ready to be studying with an iPad. So, when you mentioned technological growth, what's, what's on your mind about that?
Well, you know, we live in a technological world. Like, you're like, techno, technology is good, technology is bad. We just listen to what's going on in the news today, about how technology can come into your house and spy on you. But also, technology gives you the opportunity to, to, to search the web. You know, and find that information that you just can't go find, you know. This is, look at all these books in here, you know. But you can get on technology and do a keyword search and tons of information come up. Now, you gotta sort through it, yes, because some of it's not true. But it's there at your fingertips, you know. I, there was a, a city, but this entire city, well, excuse me, this entire neighborhood, was connected to the internet. So, no matter where you at in this neighborhood, you know, the people was connected to the internet. And this, this particular area, people just enjoy living there. But first of all, because, first of all, they could be, they just connected. They all, they, everything that they needed was right at their fingertips, yeah. So, technology is good, just like anything, man. Technology has goodness and bad.
So, is the city of Conroe up to date or do they, are they lacking somewhere in the software and computers and things like that that they have?
Well, I do know for the, I've talked to the lady who handles their, the website. Now, I do know they need some more people to help, because she is, is loaded. She handles the television station and other things. So, yeah, they do need help from that standpoint. Now, how for its technology with the city of Conroe, I don't know.
They have a TV station?
Yeah, yeah. It's, it's Channel Twelve, it's, it's, it's Channel Twelve.
Okay.
Yeah.
We mentioned forced annexation before. You know, the April Sound was, was pulled in with that. A lot of the houses, a lot of the property along 105 West was pulled, was pulled into that as well. And a lot of people are still complaining that they're not getting the services.
True.
That they were told that they would get when, when they became part of the city. Have you investigated any of that and what can you do or what would you be willing to do to help these people out, these communities out?
Well, at, currently, at this present time, there are cities who, there's a book, the, and the book, there's a book talks about, it's from the Public Service D N X, De-Annexation Study Committee. And it tells you the steps to be D N X. You know, we know Epsom went through an annexation, they filed a lawsuit, but there's also a time period you gotta wait. At a particular time, Hollinger, Hollinger, Texas is going through some de-annexation. I think it's Palestine going through some de-annexation. And I think Corpus Christi, there was a city in Oklahoma, the police said, you know what, it's just too much for us to carry. So, they go through de-annexation. So, in Hollinger, what they said is that the city council said, "Well, we've spent four hundred thousand dollars." But the people saw only too, too far, too far, things had been put out, you know. But they going through those right now. All of it, and I, when I was looking at information, information about de-annexation, I found it. So, true, yes, cities can de-annex. You know, and if that comes to the council and I find out that we hadn't done nothing for those people, yeah, I would support de-annexing, yeah, you know. And, and right now, the people who we are de-annexing, we, in my mind, we can't provide for. You know, you look at Epsom, they had everything they needed already. You know, and some other places, they, they got what they need, you know. Again, it's just for tax revenue, you know? That's how I look at it.
Under the budget category, there was a question, "Will you vote to increase or reduce the annual city budget and why? And what changes will you propose in your city's budget and why?" And at the time, you identified that you had not studied the budget. So, have you had a chance to look at that since you answered the questionnaire?
No, sir, I have not studied the budget at all.
Okay.
I have not looked at the budget, you know, I know it's online, I can pull it off and look at it online. But no, I have not studied the budget. Again, once I'm elected, I'm obligated to study the budget, you know. As a regular old John Doe citizen, Carl White, no, I'm not gonna study that budget. Because it's, that, it's not gonna do me any good right now to study that budget. Because regular old citizen, Carl White, by himself, what can I do? As an elected official, Carl White, is a whole nother ballgame. I'm obligated to study that budget, that's just my, my thing, you know. I, I don't feel like I need to waste my time studying a budget when it's not gonna benefit me.
So, you don't know if there's a surplus or not within the city of Conroe at this point in time?
I'm pretty sure there's a surplus. Yeah, I'm pretty sure there's a surplus somewhere. I'm pretty sure that could do, that we could do a whole lot better on, you know, on, on the budget, you know, management. You know, I'm pretty sure we could do a whole lot better. But what's going on now, you can always improve. You can always cut something. There's always gonna be a slush fund sitting out there. Some departments will always be getting more than what they deserve, you know, but you just have to look at those things.
And if you're elected though, when would your term start?
I hope it start May the 5th. Well, I mean, I guess, I, I think, you know, I think the way the process work at the next council meeting, day, four years, at where the council meeting, yeah.
So, if it's a, a May 5th election, within a week or two, you'd be sitting on council. And how are you gonna learn that job? Is there somebody you can follow around for a week or two?
No, you're not gonna learn it in a week or two. You're not, you're not gonna learn, and I don't plan on learning.
O J T.
It's O J T, everything, you know. I plan on, you know, because they, you know, council, they have that big gigantic book, you know, and, you know, they gonna give me that book in advance. I'm gonna, you know, read the book, find out what the information, again, I'm voting on what I think is the best. You know, I, like I said, I have, I have no special interest group that I have to, that I have to, you know, show favoritism to. I have nobody that got show favoritism to. I'm all about the people in Conroe, what's best for the people in Conroe. Because every time I help the people in Conroe, I'm helping myself, I'm helping you all too if y'all live in Conroe. That's how I work it, you know. I don't wanna put no burden on me, you know, because I put a burden on the people of Conroe, I'm putting a burden on me also. My family, my children, my mama. My family, my children, my mama, and I don't wanna do that.
Do you attend all the council meetings?
No, I watch them online.
I'm connected with the, the Tamina Cemetery Project, um, and, and I'm, I don't know how to do this, but it's a, it's a part of history.
Yeah.
Um, another part of history that we have in, in Conroe was the Conroe, um, College of Industry and
Yeah, okay, okay, I just talked about you.
You know where I'm talking about, those buildings have been sitting there, they're vacant, um, with the, the property, um, I, I just, it seems to me that the, the city should be putting, putting that to use, um, back in education, or doing something with that, um, I mean, it's a historical, uh, facility, and, and could be of use to the community today, do, do you think that's a possibility, or do you see that as a possibility?
Well, the Conroe College sit vacant for a long time, because they had a board of directors who that, most of them didn't live in Conroe. And so it just sit there, and it just sit there, and it sit, and then, now it got sold.
It did?
It's sold now, so now, that is, 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 as you go over there, it, it was sold to an investor.
Okay.
And he's in the process now trying to rent space in, yeah, right, that's where it's, when it's still, right, I, I, I've always wondered why. That, not so much as a city, why the community, that historic site, because, uh, mine, I would say my cousin, Reverend, Reverend J P Davis, when he was over there at college, we had Prairie and M, that college was thriving, it was thriving, everything that you think of for education programs was going on in that college. T S U, Prairie View, people had community meetings, people got married, we even had the first N W A C P banquet at the Conroe College. Actually have the video right now, back in the nineties, it was thriving, but then again, leadership is so important. When you got good leaders, things tend to move in a forward direction. When you got people who just want a whole position, things tend to fall apart. And so once that leader, Reverend J P Davis, once he passed away, everything just fell apart. And so now, we have a building over there which is an eyesore, true, but it was sold to an investor, but yeah, it's an eyesore.
Uh, it, it's, it's sad, because that's a, that's a part of this, um, this city and, and this county's history that, that the future generations are never gonna know anything about.
That's why, I, I, that's why, like a month ago, for ten years, I worked on a documentary, because I wanted to document history. And I actually showed that documentary like a month ago, I interviewed some of the older people in Conroe, over a ten year period.
Is that available?
Uh, well, there's gonna be a copy at the, uh, at the, uh, Hertz Museum.
Okay.
There will be a copy there.
Let's see, do you feel, okay, so, one of the questions, and the questionnaire was, do you feel the city of Conroe employees are adequately funded, if not, please explain, and you said you need more information. Um, and you indicated you haven't reviewed the budget, uh, so you really couldn't see what comps, how to compare comps to the other cities of the same size. I guess, and, and typically, that's how you evaluate between the two, uh, or, or you gotta have enough time, you know, if, if elected, to get in there, study the book, do these comps, and go forward with some of the requirements that are gonna be needed, um, because the budget is really kind of an important thing.
Yeah, really important, yeah.
You know, you wanna have your arms around going in, uh, so that you know, you know, well, it's, it's one of the reasons that, you know, people will, you know, indicate that they've run, because there's something wrong in there, um, and that they wanna fix. And I'm just wondering, uh, do we know if, if the employees are being compensated fairly, in your opinion? And that, that means policemen and firemen too.
Me and my wife have a budget meeting at our house, probably once a month, because we wanna make sure we stay on top of things. We wanna know where our money is going, we also wanna know what can we save money, we wanna know, oh, we really, do we really need this, do we really need that? Yeah, so staying on top L A budget is important, because I know at the house, that we spend too much money, you know? My wife gonna be mad, I'm gonna be mad, so budget's important. We heard that the policeman mentioned that, that the pay, they, they losing a lot of good people because they going other places, you know? Uh, so there, we, we need to, the city, see, a lot of these questions, some of these questions that, that has been coming up, been coming up for years. You know, so my question is, what have the other elected officials been doing, what have the departments have been doing? Because these questions shouldn't be coming up every, every, every forum, the same old question. So somebody's not doing their job, somebody just don't care, you know? Those, those things should be nipped in the bud, that, if that is an issue with the firemen, if that's an issue with the police, uh, and they have supported various people throughout the years, they need to hold on people accountable. Because they, they, they supported those people because those people was gonna help them, again, put four men on the truck instead of three. Though, that person was gonna help them, uh, make sure they, that their pay scale is comfortable. So s- s- something is going wrong that I don't know, you know? I, I do, I do not know why those things are not being taken care of when they should be taken care of. Budget-wise, yes, I'm gonna look at the budget, it's not gonna be the first month, the second month, or everything, but I'm gonna look at the budget. And I'm gonna help, I mean, how people will help me look at the budget.
Human nature is to always claim that you're not being paid enough and fairly, that's the thing that you're gonna have to distinguish.
Well, that's a candidate for elected office, you are by definition a politician. So what, uh, what other things in the political world have you done, do you vote most elections? Do you go to party conventions and, uh, women's luncheons and grassroots events and things like that? Starting off with your voting record, do you vote in all or most of the, uh, party elections?
I vote in, I vote, yes, I vote Republican, Democratic, because I look at that person, that's how I vote. You know, I never get stuck on stupid, stand over here or stand over there, I look at that person, so yes, I vote, I, people died, that I have a right to vote. So people who do not voted, who do not vote today, need to keep their mouth shut. They have no reason to complain, because they don't take the look, five or ten minutes to go vote. And like I say, I've been on, uh, uh, I've never attended a, a, a party conference, but I've been to N W A C P conferences a lot, and it's very educational, learn about what's going on in the world, uh, like I said, I read a lot. Worked with the, uh, uh, Homeless Coalition a lot, I've been a lot of places, I've done a lot, you know, something I can't remember. But, uh, voting is very important, you know, my children vote, uh, and I, I'm gonna make them. My daughter, at the last election, she said, Daddy, uh, who I vote for? I say, well, for messages, read and see if you like somebody, but I didn't wanna tell who to vote for, you know? So she went and voted, and I don't know who she voted for, but she did go vote.
I'm gonna pass for you.
What, okay, so, uh, one of, uh, again, under a comment in this case, one of the questions was, what are the advantages, disadvantages of economic development partnerships? And, and you said advantages are more business within the city, in other words, it attracts more business, more opportunities for job creation, uh, disadvantage, no jobs are created, and tax abatement. So please explain your comment on abatements as a disadvantage to economic development partnership.
First, tax abatement was in nineteen forty in Mississippi. And ever since then, you've been having these corporations pick this city against that city for the abatements. We have these multi-million dollar corporations coming to your city, and they want a tax incentive, you know? Ten years, but if you, you, i- i- if you, if you, you can go back and look at that ten years, they didn't contribute nothing to the city, they got the incentive, yeah, but they didn't put, they didn't create, they didn't hire nobody in the city. They didn't participate in any city functions, so that's a disadvantage. My thing is that when these corporations come into your city, uh, and they ask for some type of incentive, they also need to give it a incentive, you know, we have a lot of issue with, with mobility, they need to start helping us with our mobility study. You know, my, my big deal is entrepreneurship, uh, especially for the children. Uh, if you getting a ten-year tax abatement, you know, you need to contribute maybe to some type of a entrepreneur study program for our young children. You know, you, they need to start giving something back. And, uh, all in two thousand six, I think, in the Brooklyn Institute, talked about, you know, it's just over time, cities lose money giving these abatements. They lose money giving these abatements, because, you know, you, you, it's good, oh, yeah, we got, uh, I built up Amazon, five hundred billion dollar company, but they wanted a payment, you know, that, they wanted a big, five hundred billion, but they wanted a payment, because they know, we happy to get them here and everything. But what would Amazon contribute to, whatever city, whatever city it's not, it goes to, what would they contribute? So that's why I mean, that's a dis- a disadvantage.
Okay. Well, back to, uh, the forced annexation for a second, you know, it's been, it's a major objection to taxpayers for years and years and years and years. And we finally, in the last, uh, year or two, got some legislation to address it. And there were some, several things that were introduced, uh, not too many have passed, but there were some deadlines that had to be done, uh, in September, or the first of next year, or maybe the first of a couple of years down the road. And all these cities, including Conroe, were racing to try to suck people in to beat those deadlines. So if you get on the council, uh, and there are things in the works, uh, are, are you gonna try to stop those things that, that are started but not in the completion stage yet, to spread those people who don't wanna come into the city from being forced to come into the city?
Cause that was, I know that was, I think, a Senate Bill Six, that legislation, uh, again, if that individual person's community is sitting out there, and we cannot benefit this, we cannot benefit them, I'm not gonna vote to bring them in, because we can't benefit them. If that person comes to us and say, hey, we wanna be annexed, so often when people come to you, you don't wanna annex them, so often, I don't know why, you know? So I can tell you right now today, whatever they got on the books, now, if it's, if it's undeveloped land, that's a whole nother story. You know, because that's, that's, that's land that the city of Conroe can benefit off of, it could be, you know, the development, whether it be retail, residential, but it's undeveloped right now, but we talking about a community that's been going good for fifteen, twenty years, and all of a sudden, I think they talking about, they talking now about even a, a, a Del Lago, I heard Del Lago, you know, say, what can we, what can, what can we provide Del Lago? They, they've been out there for years, they've been doing good for years, you know, all we can, all we can provide them is, uh, more money out their pocket, give them to the city, that's all we can provide for them, yeah, so, instances like that, if it comes up, uh, that we wanna annex a location that, 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 that we cannot, that they cannot benefit from the city of Conroe, I would not support it.
You got about fifteen minutes left.
You can stop at any time.
How do you feel about the, um, the bathroom bill that's been going through the state legislature? Um, I, I know some of the cities have, have adopted it so that we don't, in city buildings, um, um, and within the city, the requirement is that males or females or whatever can use the same bathrooms. Um, do you think that that's a wise and moral decision for the city of Conroe?
Personally, I'm just talking about my personal morals, I don't think it is. Because first of all, I don't want my granddaughters going in the bathroom, and here comes some guy behind it. Personally, no, I do not agree with that, because here's man, here's woman. There should be a man bathroom and a woman bathroom. Now, I do, I do, you know, we have some bathrooms that has, you know, men and women, and that's good enough, you know, you, if you, if you's a lady, and you wanna take the child, the family go in and do some things, but no, I don't agree that a man and a woman should be in the same bathroom, woman this tall, a man this tall, no, that's, that's totally against my morals, yeah, totally against my morals.
Let's see. Okay, you mentioned diversity is so important, uh, diversity means different things to a lot of people, what does it mean to you?
Well, again, like I mentioned, uh, at that forum, I served on the Integgie Texas Diversity Committee. It was about eight of us, and we had to train five hundred people, which was all employees in Tex- Integgie Texas and everything. And it was a very, uh, humbling and a very learned experience, because when I, when I think about diversity, I think about everybody putting all those eggs in the basket, no matter what color those eggs are. But you took, but you put them eggs in there, and you just shuffle them up and everything, everybody's enjoying everybody else. Whether, when, when it's in a corporation, you bringing everybody to the table, whether you black, white, Indian, Muslim, it doesn't matter, because you doing what's best for their company in the city. You put everybody, like I say, uh, uh, you look at the city of Conroe, the question came up, you look at, you look at Willis, you look at Montgomery, you look at, uh, Cleveland, there are black guys and women on city council. The question that came up, why not Conroe when you're kinda see, I don't know why not. But diversity is important, because everybody has different ideas, you know, we got different philosophies, you know? But we might not see things the same way on certain issues, but we can still work together, we can still work together, you know, everything. And you, and, and by working with you, you might put a whole nother light on my way of thinking, or vice versa. That's why diversity is, is so important, that's why we need to be represented by people from all walks of life. You know, I don't wanna be on the boards, everybody thinks the same way, because you ain't going nowhere, believe, you ain't going nowhere at all. You want that contention, but at the end of the day, you wanna be able to come out what's good for the people also.
On the county level, uh, citizens have learned a lot of things about their, uh, county government, some things they really didn't wanna learn. One of them is the problem of nepotism, almost everybody on the court has a brother, cousin, boyfriend, daughter, working for the county. A lot of them are pretty close to the direct supervisors for them, so, uh, how much of a problem is that for the city of Conroe? Is there a rule for it, and if there's not, would you, uh, push to have a rule to stop people from employing their entire family? Or even several members of their family?
I don't, I know when I worked at Integgie, they had a nepotism law, now, uh, my wife couldn't work at Integgie, you know? But, you know, I had kin people, they couldn't work in the same department, but they could work at Integgie in another location, you know? Those things can happen, but unfortunately, so many times, you, if I'm a supervisor sitting up here, and my son maybe live, we just have Orange, Texas, I'm a supervisor, I call a supervisor, and my son gets a job, and everything, you know, so. So those things do, do, that those things do happen, those things will continue to happen. Just talking about the county, you know, I, I, apparently the county was just like going full steam ahead with it, you know, everything, you know? Pretty sure, maybe not even right now at the city, there might be some kin folks working at the city, I don't know. But it, it just depends, and when you talk about nepotism, it just depends on, I guess, the level of nepotism. You know, that's how I look at it, you know, just the level of, you know, but I don't think that you, you should hire your, your, your kin people when they not qualified to do the work, when you got someone over here who's highly qualified, but because that's your kin, you're gonna hire, I don't believe in that. I believe in putting the best person for the job, everything, that's how I look at that, you know? So often, we just put our kin folks in there 'cause we can, and they don't know a hill of beans, but we still put them in there, and I, that I do not agree with, you know?
So is there an opportunity for people to, uh, just recuse themselves when they're looking at their promotion path, the people that work under them, say, you know, that's my cousin, I don't even want a part of that decision?
Those opportunities should be there.
Yeah?
Yeah, they should be there, yeah.
But I, I don't, I don't think it happens in most places.
Yeah.
And unless there were a policy to do it, you know, it wouldn't happen.
Yeah, well, you know, it's, uh, but human nature, I mean, did you, we just going back to human nature, uh. If there's an opportunity that, you know, my child can get a job, you know, okay, that's just, that's just human nature, everything.
At one time, it was probably rare, but I think it would reach the point now where everybody's got kin folks.
Well, I'll bring up county government as well, um, we seem to have a problem with integrity within, within our county government.
Um, we seem to have a problem with integrity within, within our county government. Um, not just the nepotism, but corruption and, um, profiting on the backs of the taxpayers. I really haven't seen that in the city council, um, have you? And, and if so, where? And would you be, I mean, are, are you willing to fight it if you see it?
I haven't heard of any instances of city council, but I also don't believe that sitting on city council. You should help your buddies over here, or you should do things that's gonna help your business around the corner. I don't believe in it, because now you cheating the people, you cheating the city, uh, that's why, that's, uh, city of Conroe, one thing that they do not have, uh, is a, uh. A procurement program, you know, they don't have a procurement program, they have a, you can rush your business online, and I've done that, but. There's no way to go back and check, uh, who's getting X, Y, Z contracts, you know, they, they, the city of Conroe really needs a minority business program. That will benefit the women owned businesses, the minority, and the veteran businesses, they really need that program. Uh, other cities have it, and that will be a benefit to call it entrepreneurship, again, we have a lot of people out here. Their business is, is struggling, because they don't know how to get capital, you know, but when you have those minority business programs. Now, you can invite people like, uh, Small Business Development Center down, show people how to get a certified to work with the state of Texas. Work certified, you know, how to get your DUS number, work with the federal government. We need that here in the city of Conroe, and we don't have that, we don't have that at all. No, but I don't think that any councilman should be on council to benefit their business, or the business of their friends. Because I know, I've, I'm not on council to do that, I'm on council just to do my very be, to do my very best. I know some people gonna say, man, that was, he didn't do nothing, some people, he was, he was great. But long as I'm in my mind, and I'm clear, I'm doing the right thing, you know, with the information I have, I'll be satisfied with that, that's, that's how I look at that.
So on your flyer, I guess, probably I'll make this last question, we are at.
One minute's left.
About fifty-five, um, well, we started this few minutes later. Uh, you, you had indicated down here, growing our network of social capital to improve services for our citizens. And I think you were almost gonna touch on that for a second, can you expand on that, and what, what, what does that mean? And, and does that relate to social justice somehow, or, or what, okay.
Uh, again, Conroe, I say Conroe as a city of opportunity, where your dreams should come true. I believe that everybody, the walking, the streets of Conroe, if you want some help, we should have to give you some help. Uh, by serving the Montgomery County Homeless Coalition, uh, that's where that question came from, when we talked about the social capital, helping those people who want help. Again, one thing, when, when Amazon, one, even though they want the tax abatement, one thing that I also looked for was a workforce. A workforce of people, so I believe that we need to be able to train the people who won't help. Give them the training that we need, that's why, that most, most of y'all might not know. The Montgomery County Homeless Coalition just opened up what we call the E Three Center, which means educate, equip, and empower. It's gonna be a great opportunity for those low income, no al, uh, no, no income people who won't help, to get help, yeah. And I wanna support those organizations, uh, you know, but the county has a block grant, city has block grant, you know. Help those organizations trying to help other people, because I want everybody's dream to come true here, in the city of Conroe. That's what I mean by social capital.
So who pays for that, at the end of the day, you mentioned block grants, is that?
That's, that's, that's federal.
Federal grant, all, all?
Block grants, federal.
Federal, sponsor? Okay, but federal money comes from us, a taxpayer, right?
I guess it does, but that's okay, like, yeah, I think, like, when everything that go on, we as taxpayers, we pay for it.
So why not, why not approach companies like Energy?
We, we are, actually, actually, we are doing those things here, yeah, just, I'm just, I just mentioned block grant. That's how, that's how cities can pitch in, yeah, we are supporting, asking for those various foundations. Private donations, uh, from people and from those, uh, organizations, yes, we doing that.
Okay, so, uh, I guess we kinda reached the end of, of, of our time, and, and our, and our, the timers, uh.
Timer doesn't want to.
Yeah, limit of, uh, timeframe, but hopefully we can, uh, at least give you five more minutes, up to five minutes, if, if you want to close, and then we'll shut it down for.
I just, I'm about to open my little closing thing here, yeah, okay. As your city councilman, I will have an open door policy, that's one thing I will add up. As your city councilman, I will go, uh, into the neighborhoods and listen to your story. As your city councilman, I will seek our best practices from other cities, and see how those practices are working in Conroe. As your city councilman, I will begin the process of, uh, having a little think tanks, with bringing people together. Coming with ideas that's gonna benefit the city, everything basically, I will work with any organization that wants to work with me. I will work with anybody that wants to work with me, uh, I will be, a- again, when I'm saying a full-time councilman, I will be a full-time councilman. You know, I, you know, I plan on at least being at the city hall on a day, maybe, maybe not eight hours, but I'm gonna be there, or doing some, some city businesses, you know. Because, again, this has been a goal of mine, and I have to, in my mind, know that I have been the best councilman that the law wanted me to be, you know. Personally, I believe in Jesus Christ, personally, and I believe by be, by believing in Jesus Christ, I have to do the very best that I can. If not, I'm letting him down, and that's how I operate my life, you know, I'm gonna have to do my best, everything basically. I will not be, I, I guess you would say, maybe special interest group, bought out by any special interest group, I'm, I'm not about that. I wouldn't know how to be, get bought out by a special interest group, you know, I wouldn't know how, I'm not gonna do that, I'm gonna only work like, work, again, work for the. City, the, the city of Conroe, I wanna work to improve downtown, cause I do believe that downtown, we need more green space. More parks, we need more multi-use diverse by development, I wanna work with the, the arts, I wanna work with the tourism, because. All those things bring people into the city of Conroe, I want the people, when they come to Conroe, that they can live, work, and play here in Conroe. And that's gonna take a lot of work, some of the things that's on my mind is a long-range plan, but we can start that foundation today. It's all about, it's all about, you mentioned economic development, you know, making sure that all the neighborhoods in Conroe are, are moving up. Some neighborhoods gonna always look better than other neighborhoods, but I wanna work with all the neighborhoods to make sure that everybody is receiving their fair share. Since Conroe doesn't have what we call senior member districts, you know, the city at large, I'm obligated to work the whole city, you know. And that's why I plan on doing, meeting the people, there are so many community centers that I can go in and meet the people, uh, uh, we got. For, for, we're talking about residential community centers, we also got city buildings that people can come, uh, and, and meet me, because I wanna be that. That type of a person, you know, I, I'd say, I just wanna be the person that, you know, that, 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 that the children can look up to, you know. Again, entrepreneurship, you know, we, I missed something here, but, you know, we have some community centers right now in Conroe, you know. And I wanna make sure those, those seniors have an entrepreneurial program, that's why it's so important that these businesses, these tax abatements. That they give their fair share, you know, because the, the community centers that we have here in Conroe now, that they can start programs over there. Helping these young kids learn how to start a business, you know, I wanna make, they do things like that, I, I'm gonna get very, you know, very in, involved, you know. We have a lot of, uh, senior citizens, I'm a senior citizen myself, and I wanna make sure as I get older. The green space again, the parks is there, because, you know, I, I notice when you go to a park, and you got your children out here playing, but I'm also meeting other people. You know, I build relationships with John and Sally over here, but our children out there playing, that's why it's so important that we have more parks in Conroe. More green space, you know, downtown, I love going downtown Houston, because there's always something going on downtown Houston, you know. When I leave, it's still pumping, I want that same thing to happen here in Conroe, you know. There's stuff going on here in Conroe, again, twenty sixty, we ain't gonna be here, but Conroe will be here, and everything. And Conroe needs to look to, it's, it's gonna look totally different than what it looks like today, you know. But I wanted to look the way that we as people then got together, and we done planned it, not just elected officials planned it. I want the people to plan the city of Conroe, it's a process, we know it, it worked in Austin, Texas, they got the people involved, and we looking at Austin now. So it can happen, so again, Carl White, May the fifth, two thousand eighteen, please vote for me, Conroe City Council, thank you.
Hey, I did have one more person that came up during the forum, and, and the paper, and they talked about an eighty million dollar performing arts theater. Uh, or was that eight million, either way, do you support or oppose that, um, being built with, count up a city fund?
Well.
Or bond or whatever.
First of all, performing arts, kinda going back to tourism. If you want people to come to your city and spend they money, you gotta give them a reason to come to your city and spend they money. Now, I don't think the people in Conroe should bear all the burden of building a, a, a entertainment center, because it's gonna be beneficial to people everywhere. So that kinda goes back to creative financing, you know, we need to go, other cities, how, what did the other cities do, like, I think like, uh. Stafford, I believe, just built a new center, we, how are they paying for all these things, you know? That kinda goes back to getting in your car and going asking questions, but I do support the center. Because I think it's needed here in Conroe, because we want people to come into the city, I don't want people to not to come into the city. I want them to come here and spend they money, in our hotels, in our businesses downtown, in our local establishments, I want them, want them here. And when they go back, they coming back again next week, because they enjoy it here, yes, mhm.